We invite members of the public who want to get in touch with council to do so by sending us an email. We have certainly received plenty of emails from constituents. So let's go ahead and begin. I would like to read a brief statement first, and then I also have a statement that is relevant to our first topic, our first order of business. But let me just begin by saying that tonight is a rare opportunity, as others have pointed out, for our legislative body to focus on the recommendations from the Working Group on Reimagining Public Safety for our community. As has been stated in numerous previous meetings, the murder of George Floyd in May 2020 prompted a long overdue examination of international debate on public safety. In June 2020, the New York State Governor issued Executive Order 203, as has been referenced a number of times, and that executive order called upon local governments that operate police agencies to study their current operations and develop a plan to address the particular needs of the communities served by such police agency and promote community engagement to foster trust, fairness, and legitimacy, and to address any racial bias and disproportionate policing of communities of color with a directive to respond to the governor by April 1, 2021. Our community has had many discussions, and there have been many task groups focusing on this. We are taking this charge and this work seriously. We are working with the county in a collaborative process, and that started with the development of the joint plans that would apply to our two largest policing agencies, the Tompkins County Sheriff's Office and Ithaca Police Department. Both the legislature and council passed resolutions, April 1, 2021, that included recommendations for reimagining public safety. Some were joint, as we know. Other plans were county or city specific. Following upon the April 2021 resolution, a memo was sent in May, and this is in our council packet, and it's available on the website. A memo from then-county administrator Jason Molino and then-mayor Savante Myrick to the Legislature and Common Council in which next steps were outlined. Feedback from members of our local community, particularly Black and Brown community members, led to the appointment of a task force to consider the joint recommendations, including the creation of a community justice center to be supported financially both by the county and the city. As a member of council, a member of the working group, and a member of the CJC pre-advisory group, I want to express my strongest support for the Community Justice Center. This has been, and I do have every hope and expectation, will continue to be a collaborative process. Tonight, we want council's feedback on the draft terms of the contract being negotiated with the county on the CJC. County and legislature both budgeted funds for the development of this program for a two-year period. Mona Lita Smiley, who has presented to city administration and the common council in the past, was hired as a project director in early 2022. She will be working with an advisory board on implementation of the collaborative planks of reimagining public safety, and she has indeed begun that work. While each municipality, county, and city will continue to work on our specific recommendations, and that is one part of what we'll do tonight. The first city-specific recommendation approved by common councils, April 1, 2021 resolution, is to create a new public safety department designed by a task force, working group, that shall include some combination of IPD staff, other city staff, older persons, interested city residents, and outside experts or consultants. That working group of local community members was appointed by then-mayor Myrick and was led by two well-respected community members, Eric Rosario and Karen Yearwood. This working group, of which I and other council colleagues were members, met over probably eight months total as a whole and in subcommittees, as is outlined in the working group report that was submitted to council on March 2, 2022. There are questions surrounding processes that are now being examined. These include decisions that were not known to members of common council at the time. It is imperative, however, to recognize the dedicated work of our community members that spanned many months by separating these investigations from the working group's recommendations, all of which, these working group recommendations, came from the charge in common council's 2021 resolution. I still believe firmly, we must take this moment in time when we have heard from community members of color, especially community members of color, who have not always felt able to speak out in the past, to address the needs for a public safety system that serves all in our community. I also ask tonight, and I'm saying this to myself and my colleagues, that we refrain from assumptions, or innuendo, or personal challenges or attacks, and instead, focus our discussion on designing the most effective and inclusive public safety model for our community. And council received an email yesterday morning with information that included a term sheet. As I mentioned, we are in discussions with the county about the contract. Common council approved the Community Justice Center. We did not, at the time, have a contract, and there was a charge to develop that contract, which is what we are in the midst of doing now. I received an email from the chairperson of the county legislature, Shawna Black, and I want to read a few excerpts from her email. And this is specific to the term sheet that you all have. First, the county disagrees with the proposed length of the contract in the term sheet. The term ending August 31, 2023 does not give adequate time to effectuate the work of the CJC. County would prefer a term through 2024 that aligns with the budget and funding allocation process for the city and council. It also provides a two-year period to evaluate the program fully staffed, once it is fully staffed, and the program metrics. Second point from the county. Quarterly prospective CJC work plan and a budget approvals by common council is impractical and not a sustainable commitment to the work of reimagining public safety. Calling the CJC's work to question and constantly voting to approve, their work would not be an effective use of staff time, would stifle progress, and relitigate decisions that have already been made. Third, the CJC should include three positions. And as you see in your packet, there have already been budget allocations and decisions, positions, I should say, already in place. And what this memo is now addressing is that the CJC should include three positions: the program director, already budgeted for, the budget analyst, and a part-time administrative assistant. The administrative assistant role has been previously agreed upon by both parties, though the funds have not yet been actualized by the city. Chair Black goes on to say, while we realize transparency is important and essential, publishing the term sheet and discussing terms publicly while there are ongoing negotiations put the entire program and our partnership at risk and was a breach of trust. We have a shared goal of reimagining public safety to better meet our community needs. We have responsibility to not put the anticipated outcomes of this work at risk, at further risk. My response in conversation with Chairwoman Black was to indicate that it is important for common council to have a transparent process and a discussion of the terms if we are to be negotiating and agreeing to a contract. So that is the first discussion item on our agenda tonight, discussing the city-county contract for funding the Community Justice Center. And in your packet, you also see the memo from then-county administrator and then mayor that outlines the funding. And the city has committed to paying $124,430 for the first year, actually, the first and the second year, as I recall, and that there would be evaluations throughout that process. And that's really what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about how we move forward with the contract that puts in place what has been budgeted, but not with specific allocations. So with that said, I will recognize anyone who wants to comment, any questions about the term sheet. And I will turn at some point to city attorney Levine also, who may be able to answer questions in addition to those of council members. Responses to the term sheet. Yes, Rob, Robert, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Laura. Respectfully, I think Duxon had his hand up before me. I know it's sometimes hard to see the windows pop.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. But so I guess to start, why are we not starting the term two years from either now or at the earliest Mona Lita's hiring? And why are we insisting on quarterly budget approvals? Now, to the Chairwoman Shawna Black's points.
So your question is about when the term is starting?
That's right. Why are we backdating it to September 21? And why are we insisting on fairly high overhead? And this quarterly budget approval that arguably puts Mona Lita in a position of feeling uncertain about her job.
Laura, would you like me to go ahead and speak to some of that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, sure. So for starters, I guess I do want to rephrase your question slightly. You said, why are we? We are not doing anything in particular. We're here to find out what council wants to do. So I think that's an important starting point for this conversation. And in light of recent events and council's recent determinations around related topics in the RPS process, it seems essential to actually get council guidance and buy-in upfront. If there's one lesson that folks have learned in the last while, I would hope that that's it. I'm on a subject like this. To the date question that you were asking, that was the county's proposed start date. The proposed start date received from the county was the start date that you see here. And the commitments that the common council had approved last year around funding of the CJC was a two-year term. So what you see here is combining the county's proposed start date, which is, I think, just maybe a few months shy of when staff was actually hired to the CJC, which I believe was right around, I think it was in January of this year, and applying the two years that council had committed to that range. So that is the answer to the data issue. And I think you can see, I believe, the memo in your agenda packet from May of 2021 refers to that two years, if I remember correctly. Yes, right. It actually refers to a two-year financial investment on about two-thirds of the way down the first page of that May 18, 2021 memo from the county administrator and the mayor. So that's the data issue. As for the quarterly reporting, that's obviously a determination that we're looking for guidance from council on. What we have seen from council recently indicates that folks want accountability and transparency and an ability to have regular weigh-in on the process. And so we are here to get council's thoughts on what kind of a process we want to support around that. I think that's enough.
Yeah, and I'll just reiterate that we are talking about a draft. We are not talking about something that is complete, but rather something that, as Ari has said, we absolutely want council to weigh in and be making these decisions, these recommendations, as we did in the resolution in April 2021. Robert?
Thanks very much, Laura. I have two, I hope, brief questions. In this memo, I tallied up what appears to be the total staffing request, and it is, in fact, the total position cost for the director and the data analyst. And I'm a little confused, just trying to reconcile this with the email communication we received from the legislature about the administrative assistant role previously being agreed upon. Is there an additional MOU resolution or budget allocation that is not included in this agenda packet that we have tonight?
Steve may be able to address that question. I did not see and did not recall resolution adding budget line for the admin assistant. I should point out that there is $15,000, as you see, for other operating expenses. There is additional funding, the $19,950, that will be borne by the county for the project management software. But all of that is included in the draft term sheet. The question is about the administrative assistant. And again, that is a part-time position. And I believe what the, and I'm not sure who had an understanding of this, but I believe the amount that the city will decide about being responsible for is roughly $9,000 toward that part-time salary. But Steve, we spoke about this earlier. Were you able to find anything concrete on this?
So, yeah, in my research, what I looked at was obviously the original authorization of $124,430, which did not include, only included the two positions that, as you all have seen. Then we did include funds in the budget of $307,666 for the county-city activity. And at the time, we put it into restricted contingency because we didn't have all the details from that. The mayor then did forward to council and myself the more details as we started to talk through this information during the budget discussions for 2022. And part of that, $307,666 includes payments for the project director fringes, also the data analyst and admin assistant level one at $18,491. So that was included as part of that. So obviously, those monies are currently in restricted contingency. And council, obviously, they were there, they were put there because there wasn't great detail at the time. And so now is the time to work through that detail and determine which direction you want to go.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Sure.
That was your first question, I think you had two, Robert?
I was just going to say, would you mind if I followed up? Thank you. And I would just, for the sake of our discussion, maybe perhaps offer, it might be productive for us to, at least for the purposes of this conversation, decouple how periodic we want reporting from how periodically maybe would want to reauthorize funding. I would just say, you know, I disagree that it's overly onerous to require quarterly or semi-annual reporting. It's very common practice in, you know, the grant-making world, for example. I recognize the argument that a three-month window of funds being dispersed before they have to be dispersed again can create some administrative drag. And so, you know, for my own part, I would be happy to have those reports decoupled from the funding reauthorizations in a way that colleagues deem to make sense. But I would just, I guess, my main point being, unless I'm mistaken from some sort of process perspective, I don't believe that those reports must coincide with funding reauthorizations.
I think that is a determination that council can make. And that's why we've come to council tonight, to get your feedback, your questions, exactly on this kind of thing. So thank you for that question. Council can decide to, as you say, decouple the reporting from voting on quarterly funding expenditures, if I've understood you.
For sure.
Voting on a progress report, that is.
For sure, that's right. And I think the related question that I think it would be useful to have guidance from council on is whether council is looking for approval authority over prospective work plans for the coming, whatever period of time you want to designate, or whether you're simply looking for a report on what has been done, and you can say thanks or no thanks, but the work's already been done. No, that's the other related question, and that's built into that.
Comments on that? And Phoebe, I did see your hand up a minute ago. I don't want to skip over you, but. Okay, certainly put your hand up again if you want to jump in. But any comments on this point? Do we want to be looking at a prospective? George, I see your hand, and then Cynthia?
Cynthia, you can go first.
Cynthia?
Yeah, thank you. I think Ari raises a good question. I do think that it would be helpful to have at least a recognition of what it is that the CJC is doing and make sure that we do have a role and voice in the work that they are conducting, understanding the scope and review of what we're involved in. One of the questions that I have been receiving from various departments has to do with the city funding or this collaborative effort between the city and county in addressing policing that may not include other policing entities, and maybe in some cases, not even the sheriff's department, because the sheriff is an elected position that may choose not to participate. So having a good idea of what we are doing in collaboration with the sheriff's department, will there be participation from the policing with regards to Village of Cuba Heights, Village of Dryden, Village of Groton? How are all of these things involved? You know, we, as city taxpayers, we pay city taxes and county taxes. So making sure that we fully understand the work of the CJC, the involvement of the various municipalities, as well as the sheriff's department, as well as other policing entities, is important.
I'll just jump in and comment that the work of, you know, as I said in a statement, the work of the Community Justice Center will focus on the joint recommendations, the recommendations that county and city have collaborated and agreed upon as working toward. The CJC will develop an advisory board that will address the implementation of those recommendations. And that is both city and county-wide. So the departments you've mentioned, the sheriff's department, and so on, would be involved. I know there was a question that someone asked over email about the relationship between, and correct me, the person, whoever asked this, Call delineation and CJC. And I do not recall in the flurry of emails who raised that question. So if you can think about it and raise your hand, if that is a question you have, we'll come back to it. George, though, you did have your hand up, and then I do see Phoebe's hand.
Thanks, Laura. I, so generally speaking, if I understood Steve correctly, that this was just a misunderstanding about paying for a part-time administrative assistant? We, in fact, have included that? Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't know that it is a misunderstanding as much as there are funds in restricted contingency, but we need, we would need a resolution to release funds from restricted contingency with a specific amount identified. And the city and the county have agreed to sharing, equal sharing of costs. There are some exceptions, such as the county's software that the county is covering. But something like this, I believe, we, in theory, agreed to share evenly. So we would need a resolution, George, is my understanding.
Okay, well, I would support that. I think it's important that the office work effectively. And so I would support such a resolution. And generally speaking, I would just like to say that for any collaboration to work, especially this one, we need to be on good terms with the county. And if they have concerns about this quarterly business, I think we should try to address that and come to a mutually agreed upon accounting moving forward. That's it.
Thank you, George. Phoebe, and then Robert.
Okay. So as I sit here, like, I hear about many, so this order was for community to be involved in this process along the way. And I'm not hearing really much about how community's involvement will continue throughout this process, right? Like, you know, so Mona Lita is now a hired part. I want to know how community members, who this order was asked to be fully involved in this, and how will they continue? Because I hear nothing about community. And I guess we're at another place now, like they've done they do. But I'd like to hear more of, or maybe I'm on the wrong key right now. And if I am, just let me know. But I hear collaboration of all these different agencies of policing and not much about community. And the community is supposed to be suggesting what they'd like to see. And so my concern is that we're going to lose community in this process.
Thank you, Phoebe, for raising that question. That's a great question. Actually, both Cynthia and I have served with a number of others on Community Justice Center pre-advisory board to ask questions, to begin to build the more, more permanent advisory board. And central to that discussion and the members of who will be included in that advisory board is community members. So your question is well-timed.
And also, my concern, once again, is like, you know, there's monies going to these other peoples, but. community members, was anything put in about how they will be supported to continue this work?
I want to make sure I understand the question, how money will be put in to, to what?
Well, well.
The justice center?
So not just the justice center. Many times, community members are not rewarded for financially, for the work that they've, that they do, right? And in this reimagining, was that, was, was any of that discussed? And maybe, you know, yeah, or, or just ignore me.
No, never ignore you. No, your question again is a good one. And I think it begins to touch upon, correct me if I'm not understanding this correctly, but I think it begins to touch upon some personnel-related issues. And I, I will say that we will have an executive session at the end of tonight's public meeting committee of the whole. So we will be addressing some other issues during that executive session. So thank you for that question. And then let me turn to Rob Gerhart. You've not spoken yet. And turn to Jeffrey, you've not spoken, and then I'll circle back to, to Robert. And sorry if I'm missing anyone's hands. Rob Gerhart.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And so I just want to pick up on the point that Robert first brought up, which is this notion, and I think others have also talked about, which is this idea of separating out reporting about the activities of CJC from any kind of budget approvals on a quarterly basis. I, I would tend to agree that I think there's some, I'm not sure there's a need for us to be reviewing quarterly budget approvals. But I would think it's important for us to have regular updates that both to someone's point earlier, report on what's happened and also look ahead to what is happening. I think that kind of collaborative engagement hits at what many of we, many of us are hoping for in this work between the city and the county and to prop up the work of the CJC in doing so. So I, I hope that's where we're going to head. But I'm, I'm interested in hearing from others as well.
Thanks, Rob. Jeffrey?
Yeah, I just thought I would, you know, try to connect some of the dots of what others have, have raised here. I, I think Rob can tell most speaks reason, you know, if there's any way to decouple the, the finances from the opportunity to just to provide updates. I think I would definitely get behind that. But I also would suggest that we should really be thinking about, and this sort of speaks to Phoebe's point. I think that a quarterly update is, should really be viewed as an opportunity to pitch programs to the community, to wrap, you know, get people involved across the community and speak to all of the agencies that, you know, we're connecting via this project. This is a pretty dynamic position that Mona Lita and her team are going to be in, you know, to really do broad outreach across the whole of Ithaca and Tompkins County in collaboration with good resources at hand. That, that should energize all of us in this effort. And, and the more that we can hear from her, the better.
Thank you. Thanks. Robert, and then Cynthia.
Thank you very much. Laura, first, I'll just, you were referring earlier to my email about delineation, but it wasn't called delineation specifically. It was actually clarity of responsibilities for the public's benefit about which agencies would be responsible for which plans, which you obviously very clearly recapitulated a few minutes ago. But that, that was the, the, the email in particular, just about the responsibilities, not, not the nitty gritty of operational details. I would also just say, you know, I, I'd echo George and others about working closely with our county partners. And I guess a question I have for you, Laura, and for anyone involved as well as staff, you know, can I ask like, what our county colleagues' preferences are with respect to prospective versus retrospective reporting and funding? Because like, again, to George's point, I think it's, you know, I, I'm fairly flexible, I think, on, on what, what the best practice is. And I certainly want to make sure we're, we're doing this in a, in a collaborative way. My, my personal leaning would be sort of more on the, the, the prospective model where we're sort of presented a work plan for a substantial period of time. And then, you know, funding is, you know, released in pursuit of that work plan. But I'm again, very flexible about what other colleagues here, as well as our county colleagues, you know, stand. And I also just wanted to lastly say, you know, I, I, I second, and I think we'll have a discussion, opportunity to discuss it later, but I second what Phoebe said about, you know, the community component and making sure that that, that remains tied to the conversation. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ari, if you wanted to, it looked like you wanted to jump in.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll just say, yeah, to answer your question, and I'll start as a preface to your question by reminding all of us that the CJC in terms of employment relationship and direct supervisory responsibility will be a county entity. It's a joint entity in terms of funding and, and potentially in terms of results, but it is a county entity. So I think that's important to consider in terms of then asking what the county wants compared to what the city wants. They may not be the same things. But, but in answer to your question, the county's proposal involved regular updates for sure to both legislative bodies by the CJC, but no approval authority, or I think it's fair to say probably no prospective reporting. I, I, you know, you can, we can all read into the word updates whenever we want, whether that's retrospective or prospective. But I think the more traditional interpretation of an update would be a retrospective saying, here's what we've been doing lately. Here's what we have been working on. But you could read it either way. And clearly, that could be clarified, again, depending on council's input here. Very clearly, the county is not a fan of vesting approval authority over which work is getting done in, in council. And, and I think that really does go to the heart of this conversation because the, if, if any model that's going to work well in terms of working up potential plans for implementation will need the buy-in of the body that then needs to choose to implement those plans. And in this, in this case, that's the common council. And, and so I think council should ask itself very, very bluntly right now, whether you will be prepared to implement plans when they are brought to you for implementation based on one model versus another here. One model being you get some updates along the way versus another model where you say, yes, we are actually voting to approve this particular set of work that's been done.
Thank you, Ari. Cynthia, I see your hand.
I, I think I really echo the sentiment that, that Ari is expressing, that the only way things are going to functionally be implemented is if it is done so with council approval. Council, unlike the county legislature, can direct the police department. The county legislature has limited authority in directing the sheriff's department. So it does make sense, absolutely, that we should have prospective approval authority in the work plans of the CJC. If we can do so in such a way that allows for longer planning and, and commitment of our financial approval, whether or not that's once a year, at the beginning of the year, or with adjustments as necessary, where we're not perhaps tying it to financial disbursements every three months. I think we can find a way to retain, or I would like to find a way to retain prospective approval of council in the work plan of the CJC, while also providing that financing flexibility that allows longevity and continuation of staff with the CJC.
Thank you. Thank you. Jorge, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I want to echo a lot of what's been said by previous council members, Cynthia, Robert, and Phoebe. And I, and I think myself, I am leaning towards more of a prospective approach. Just because I think it's really important to sort of follow up with what Ari was saying about us, you know, having buy-in and, and, and as much oversight over this as possible, given that, as I've stressed throughout this entire process, it's really important that we take the launch of this very success very seriously, because we want the launch for any recommendations or rollout to be successful. Because if not, you only get a certain chance, one chance at a first impression. And if we muck that up, the entire plan's in jeopardy. And so there's been a lot of rhetoric about this being a a first step and something that we can work with along the way. But it's important that that first step is as solid as possible, because if not, we're going to be back at the drawing board. And we're going to have to reiterate this entire process again. And so with that in mind, I do think of having some degree of, of prospective control and updates would be helpful while maintaining, I agree with Robert's point about decoupling and maintaining his healthy and, and united relationship with the county as possible.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's fair to say that all of us are interested in a strong relationship with the county as we move forward on reimagining public safety. This is one element of that. And the information that is in the draft before you, really, the intent has been to build the strongest CJC and the strongest plan going forward. This plan for the Community Justice Center is for two years, but there has always been the intent that there would be regular reports, quarterly reports, I believe are even mentioned in the mayor and the former county administrators' memo. It was not necessarily tied to release of, of funds, but we're definitely interested in the success of, of this particular plank of the reimagining public safety. And that is what we're trying to build. So the input and questions tonight are very helpful. George?
Getting back to the two years, the two-year agreement and when that starts. And I'm hearing from Shawna Black that that doesn't give enough time. Would it, would it be helpful if we changed that date to the first of the year when Mona was hired and and simply made it 2022 and 2023? Would that be helpful?
Well, that's something that council can discuss, debate, I believe, make, make a decision on. The point, just, just to amplify, George, what you have said and what Chairperson Black has said is that because staffing is just now getting in place, the CJC would have 18 months of data to provide rather than a full two years. So that is something certainly that the council can take into consideration.
Yeah, I, I think there's plenty of wiggle room there personally. And I, I'd have to read it again carefully as to why she why she set the parameters she did, but again, that's something we can cooperate on. In my opinion.
Okay, thank you. And, and certainly when council and the legislature approved their respective resolutions indicating that there would be a two-year financial investment, which would be reevaluated after the two-year period. This is from a memo that's dated May 2021. It was unclear, certainly from that early date, when a project director would be brought on board and other staff brought on board. So.
Well, we didn't start spending money in May, did we? When did we start spending money?
Good question for Steve. Steve, have we spent? I believe that the county will be invoicing the city. So I do not know if there has been an invoice yet, because we don't have a contract yet.
Correct. Yeah, we have not been invoiced, and we have not spent any of the funds to date.
But it seems clear that the county has spent funds, and they've told us much, which is why they're looking to invoice, I believe, effective in January of this year. It's not clear to me whether there were any expenditures in the fall of last year to correspond to the start date that they had proposed in the contract.
Yeah, I don't know specifics. I, I can imagine there were some funds expended in the search process that resulted in the hiring of Mona Lita Smiling. I think we're all aware that the, the county is, I think, as has been said, overseeing the position, the project director position in terms of providing office space and some other areas. We are sharing benefits as well as salary with the county. But the county is providing office space, for example. Rob Gerhart, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I would like to get this resolved because I, I, I agree that I think we should give this as much timeframe as possible. So if the work of the CJC really didn't start until January, I think we should be timing it two years from that point. And a question about the numbers in front of us. Are these numbers the annual numbers? So over a two-year period, it's double that? Or is this the two-year commitment?
Those are annual.
Okay, thank you. That's what I assumed, but I just wanted to confirm that. Thanks.
Yes, so council voted to approve the $124,430 on an annual basis. Yeah. And the other figures you see, as Ari mentioned, are in the last. Robert?
Thanks, Laura. In the spirit of like us trying to circle the drain on a path forward, I'll, I'll just throw out, you know, pending conversations with our county colleagues, I, I think I would potentially be comfortable with something like an annual work, prospective work plan with funds released where we are then receiving updates on a more regular, whether that's quarterly or otherwise basis. I mean, I'm reading the final resolved of this resolution in our agenda packet. It, it does say we will receive regular reports. Apologies to everyone who has this in front of them, but partly for the public's benefit, right? Regarding the establishment of the Community Justice Center and any additional budgetary requirements for implementation of the undertakings identified in the reimagining public safety plan, and shall consider this information prior to any further expenditure being made. I'm reading that as, as we move forward on this, I think it's reasonable to, again, I don't want to, you know, put unnecessary limitations on this body, but I, I think something like an annual work plan that is prospective, that is kind of reaffirmed, not dissimilar to many of the MOUs that we engage in with various organizations and government entities. I don't view that as overly onerous. And maybe that's not the right timeframe, right? But that, that's just what I'll throw out as my preliminary feelings on the matter. Hopefully, our, our county colleagues will maybe be able to join us at some point and, and, and share their views on this, because, or maybe we can go there. Yeah, thank you.
And Robert, just to make sure I understand what you're suggesting, an annual work, an annual prospective work plan that would be approved by the common council before it was undertaken. I think that's what you're implying.
I thank you for the clarification. Or yes, that is, that is what I was getting at. Thank you.
And did you add similarly annual funding? Prospective funding?
Thank you, Laura. I guess I was clearer in my head. The idea that I'm, that I am offering for discussion is a, a The idea that I am, that I am offering for discussion is a, a prospective work plan that upon approval will release an annual sort of batch of funds. And then, of course, we still receive the periodic, whether they're quarterly informational retrospective updates, right? Which we can then use to monitor, you know, okay, here's what the work plan we approved says. Here's the progress that's made incrementally, right? And it, I think it doesn't put unnecessary administrative constraints or burdens on our colleagues. But it does follow the spirit of at least how I read this resolution. And I defer to colleagues who are from the previous council. But this resolution to me, again, seems very clear that our intention was to approve further action before releasing funds.
Thank you, thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, Rob, to that, I would just say, you know, I think it's, it's fine to have a prospective annual update. But you may want to sort of maintain some leverage over projects and releasing funds further on in the year. I mean, if, if we're really hooked on some great ideas that come forth in that prospective announcement about what we're going to try and achieve this year, I think we'd want to reserve, you know, some kind of progress check ability to make sure we're on track. And, you know, also if we're just running, if it's different from the updates that we're receiving quarterly, that we're running, hitting walls in different fronts, maybe it wasn't the most pragmatic approach, you know, just to be able to have that assessment capability at, at some point in, in the course of years. So it seems to me, you know, a mid-year stop point for real reflection would, with some kind of funding element attached to it would be fair.
Thank you. Robert?
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's a, that's a well-taken point, Jeff. I, I would say, you know, I think that's why you strike the balance on, on a prospective work plan with quarterly updates. You know, given that just over eighty-six percent of the proposed budget in this memo is salary, I'm a little reluctant to introduce that sort of personnel uncertainty into the mix. I would understand if there were maybe large capital expenditures that were expected or large programming expenses that were expected. But I am, I have a, I have a level of discomfort with keeping. And I mean, I'm open to the timeframe you propose, right? But I'm just like, my initial reaction is like, I have, I have a level of discomfort with setting the horizon for, you know, people's jobs funding to be terminated, you know, in, in the event of a, of a, of a negative outcome on a, on a very short sort of notice. I think the, the uncertainty element there of, of the work that's being done is, I think somewhat mitigated by, by that reporting. But that's just where I was coming from in my initial position. So thank you for that, those thoughts.
Cynthia and then Jeff.
Yeah, I guess I didn't hear Jeffrey's comment that same way. I do think it makes sense that if, if there is at some point council decision to revise the work plan or add to the work, work plan, that that could be done, not necessarily tied to salary of the staff, but more to, again, continue to retain the authority to change the work plan whenever it is deemed necessary by council, not just once a year. I think that's a, that seems a prudent and and very easy thing that could be incorporated. One of the, the qualities, I realize I'm changing topics ever so slightly, is when updates are provided to council, whether it's quarterly or whatever periodic point in the year, I would very much like to hear not only about the work plan with relation to the city work in conjunction to CJC, but also updates to make sure that partnerships with the county and other policing entities in the county are described. Again, a lot of the joint efforts are joint efforts. And it would be important to know that if there are barriers with county participation or sheriff's department participation, we should be made aware of that as part of the update.
Yeah, thank you. And again, I'll just repeat that the Community Justice Center is charged with implementation of the joint collaborative recommendations. So these would only be those recommendations that are city and county, not city exclusively, not county exclusively.
Yes, I'm just saying that if there's for any reason a hiccup on, on another party's side, that that would be included in the update.
And I, I'll just add here that there will be an advisory board. Council, as will the legislature, receive regular updates. We're discussing what those updates, the frequency and what would be included. But there will also be a, an ongoing advisory board of the CJC. Phoebe?
Yes. So I'm listening to this and, and I wasn't around when, when this, when y'all put this together. And it kind of, I'm, I'm just, I'm baffled that this was only kind of vision envisioned for two years when we are talking about a history of, of policing in communities that have not been not been always the best. And some of them have been. But I just, I'm sorry that in the, in this some way, because there's going to be hiccups, there are going to be things that go wrong and not right. But something I've learned throughout the work that I've done is because things go wrong, don't mean that things aren't right. But anyway, so, so I'm just saying, this trying to figure, so this is a pilot program for two years, pretty much. Because the monies that are being put in this is basically to cover people's salaries and other things for the next two years?
Yes, yes, but you're, you're raising another very good point. And that is that it is initially a two-year commitment with the possibility of annual renewals based on the, the votes of the county and the city counties. So there's, I think, well, I know, a recognition that this is a new initiative. It's a very promising initiative that will bring, my hope, a great deal to the community and will reflect the community. And we'll want data, we'll want the metrics in terms of the success of the program and use that to build upon, to look at furthering the program in the future. So it's not intended to be two years and stop.
Okay.
To be one year in study, one year in study, then considerations of how it may move forward.
Okay, because I think we all should kind of look at, we are trying to renew a relationship that over years have come to what it's come to. Yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Phoebe. Jeff, I see your hand.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Laura. But just a kind of a question, I, I'm just curious if it's possible. Could you potentially create a salary that is constant? And then have sort of a threshold that's a little bit performance-based? And that enables us still to have that responsive, you know, are, are we achieving goals that we really prioritized in that first meeting? In that first update that we received? That was just my, my idea. Is that even possible? Or does everything have to be one solid salary that's paid out over the course of the year incrementally? I'm not sure who would answer that, maybe Steve?
Well, I think you're asking, if I'm understanding your question, kind of asking HR performance-based question related to salary?
But I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, I think what we're going to find is that the updates that we receive, that, that our perspective outline significant projects. We want to connect this element of the community to this element of the community and produce, you know, data that supports this and, you know, relationships that support the community as a whole. So the updates that we'll be getting quarterly presumably would be speaking to those, you know, the progress report of that. And if we're failing on one front of that and it's a prioritized project, could you potentially have, have some oversight over that, that, that does retain the, the, the possibility of releasing funds in a different way? But still make sure that salary is consistent?
So this isn't a direct answer to that question, but I guess what I need to emphasize is that this contract, again, the city will be the employer of, excuse me, the county will be the employer of CJC staff. And the city's role under this contract is only as a funding partner with the county for their employees, which goes back to the question of what kind of approval authority does the city want over the way those, those city dollars are being spent. But I don't think that there's a way to directly set up any incentives to your point around the employee's salary. I guess in theory, the county could choose to do that, though I'll be honest with you, I, I would be quite doubtful that the county would be interested in doing that. And I would guess that the most productive angle for, for the city is to, to look at what approval authority it wants over the expenditures and the work plan. And again, you know, I, I, there obviously is a relationship between those two, without doubt. But, you know, I think you may notice in the term sheet that you have in your packet, it has language that says, "The city intends in good faith to support the full year's expenditure of this budget for each of two years of this contract pursuant to council approval as provided in this agreement." That kind of a statement is there to get at the idea that this isn't about putting somebody's salary in jeopardy. It's about the substance of the work plan that will be worked on. So I think that's the closest I can come to, to a direct answer to your question right now. I will also note separately that I think at this point, I've heard some members of council, I've heard a good number of members of council who seem to be interested in prospective approval authority over work plans. And I think I've heard some of you interested in annual prospective approval authority and others in semi-annuals, every six months, prospective approval authority. I don't know if there's any more specific views or consensus or, or non-consensus around that issue, but it would be interesting to hear and useful.
Thanks, Ari. That's good.
Yeah, I, I'll just expand on one point. Yes, we are funding partners with the county on the Community Justice Center. But on the advisory board, there will be representatives, including representatives from the county, representatives from the city. So there will be programmatic collaborations as well as funding collaborations. Patrick?
I think Ari said it succinctly, but I think everybody's at a point of agreement between either six months or one year for perspective. And I would ask, I think, as Robert was saying before, it's very standard to ask folks to do quarterly things. We don't need a full presentation or to approve a quarterly thing. But it'd be nice to be emailed a quarterly thing and be nice to be presented upon once a year. And that's sort of my end of it.
Thank you. So it, it sounds as though there is interest in prospective plans and regular updates that would provide retrospectives in terms of what work has been accomplished. So setting out what work is intended to be accomplished and then ongoing regular updates on what work has been accomplished. Right? Did I get that right from everyone? Okay. Duxin and then Rob Gerhart, and then back to Robert.
Just to answer Ari's question about, you know, just polling us, I think I favor Robert's one-year perspective. My thinking there is that it gives the group the freedom to kind of pursue their work without feeling like to be micromanaged too much. Honestly, I don't have strong feelings on that, but I think I tend to favor the one year on that. And otherwise, I agree with what it sounds like. I think even more than, you know, quarterly, just come from council, which is like the working group, the working groups did.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Rob, Robert and Cynthia?
Yeah, I think I, I just want to make sure we understand the point here. I, I mean, I, I understand, you know, it's nice for us to have some input on things, but that kind of oversight, especially given the, the money we're approving is almost exclusively for salaries and benefits, right? There's a very small operating budget there. So I think it's a, a bit of a reach and for us to be giving that level of control over work plans. So, you know, more than the annual process we do. And I think our two-year commitment is already a nod towards the commitment that Phoebe and others have expressed. So, you know, because otherwise, we normally do this on an annual basis. And I think there's probably very few examples, Steve might know more and others may know, where we're actually doing anything on less than a yearly timeframe of release of funds. So, so I hope that we would be consistent in the way we do this, unless we're going to change everything.
Thanks, Rob. Robert? And then Cynthia's hand and then back to Duxin. Duxin, did you have your hand up again?
Oh, sorry about that.
Okay, Robert?
Thanks very much. Yes, I think we are at the, the, the summary version, the summary point of this discussion. Yeah, I would just say, again, I think annual work plans and annual funding release is, in my experience, fairly standard. You know, state, federal government practice for, for initiatives. I mean, we, our own budget process, as colleagues have just noted, and then quarterly informational updates, whether those are presentations or, as Patrick mentioned, written reports, which I, I certainly would appreciate just the chance to peruse those in more detail. And then I would say, you know, if colleagues are willing to do that framework, you know, perhaps the next step being just having a conversation with our county colleagues, if that is something they would be amenable to.
Yeah, and I should mention here, there is another conversation planned with our county colleagues. So really, the intent tonight is to get exactly the kind of feedback and input that we are receiving from council. So this is, this is helpful. Cynthia?
Thank you. I do support the proactive approval of work plans. Ari raised a point in the chat that one of the differences between this and many other city-funded projects is that most aren't doing work that will actually need to be implemented by an act of council. You know, if you look, for example, at some of the items that are joint city and county efforts, by proactively approving a work plan, for example, that is going to reevaluate the SINT truck and how that is, how that work is collaborated between the police department and the county department, what we're going to be focusing on. You know, by having that authorization at the beginning to say, yes, we are committed to this. We want this work to happen. We agree with the direction that the CJC is, is proposing. That is saying both to the community and to the CJC and, and the county what our direction is. And so by being able to follow through with that, with an act of council, I think it's part of that larger process. So I do, I do think it's very important to have this retained on an annual basis. Again, provide us the ability to change it as needed throughout the year. To Patrick's point with regards to updates, because this is such an important process, because it is important for the community to be informed of what is going on, what we because it is important for the community to be informed of what is going on, what we intend to do, what our values are, what our priorities are. I think those updates should be done in public on the floor of council so that the whole community can receive them and appreciate them and be able to respond to them. And those are my suggestions.
Yeah, I agree to the in-person or in Zoom, but the updates to be done in that fashion. And they can include, of course, a written report as well. I think both is probably advisable. Okay. Phoebe?
Y'all hear me? I think it's very important that community be involved so that they can keep us informed. I agree wholeheartedly with Cynthia that all partners should continue to be on board and informed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think on this particular topic, we have the necessary input from council, much appreciated. There will be, as I said, another discussion with county folks. And we can certainly report back at a council meeting on this, okay? All right, we ready to move on? Okay, thank you, thank you. I know there were some emails that were going back and forth today on substantive discussion of reimagining public safety. Members have expressed interest in moving forward with recommendations. And I fully support moving forward. As I've said, at City Admin, I was interested in understand and still am interested in understanding our processes and what has taken place, but very, very interested in us moving forward. And there are a couple of possibilities that have been discussed over email. One of the possibilities raised, the question of referendum this November, November 2022. And so I would like to turn to Ari for just clarification on timing of referenda and where we sit with that going forward now.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so in order to reach referendum this fall, the last, functionally, the last opportunity for common council to vote on a local law would be at the July common council meeting, a few days shy of two months from now. And that would be the vote on the final local law itself in order to put that local law together. We would need, working backwards, the local law would have to be aged under New York State law first. And that aging process takes just over 10 days. Again, I say process, it's a legal requirement that have been delivered to council in its final form. It's a bit over 10 days because New York State law is bizarre and doesn't count Sundays and holidays and a few other things. And in order to then work backwards, another step, we would need councils, very clear policy direction and input on what that, where that local law is supposed to take the city well before that in order to put together an appropriate local law for your review and input. So when you put all of that together, there's not much time between here and there. But that's the timeline that would be available for reaching reference.
And Ari, if I may, could you clarify what triggers referendum? And are there possibilities? For example, one referendum that we know is on the November ballot, because it was approved by council last year, is city manager position. If that referendum passes and if there is a possibility of a deputy city manager, a civilian deputy city manager of public safety, is that something that would require referendum?
I don't believe that would require a referendum. If the city manager referendum were to pass this fall, then the appointment of a deputy city manager, as I see it from a legal angle, would require budgetary determinations by common council and, you know, policy and legislative determinations by council and some votes of council, obviously, but no, it would not require a referendum.
And what is the distinction for a commissioner of a Department of Public Safety?
Sure, so the commissioner under our current structure would both be a much more fundamental restructuring under the charter, which has its own potential to have referendum implications. But it also, under our current structure, it would change the relationship between an elected official, namely the mayor, and a direct appointee of that elected official, namely the chief of police. And that in turn has referendum implications.
Thank you. I think Jorge, I saw your hand first and then Phoebe?
Yeah, I'd like to, on the question of referendum and policy that we are trying to get ready by the time an election occurs or by the time of November. I have a lot of concerns, I have to admit, because there is a whole lot of good work that's been done by community advocates in this working group. But to have policy extracted and voted upon by July with a great deal, in my estimate, of factors left unknown and uncertain is a little concerning because to me, I think we need to have a conversation regarding, as I've always said, putting a very strong foot, first step forward. And in my estimate, there are a lot of variables, whether and how we are going to staff a lot of the people who are going to be doing a lot of this new reimagining work. I still have my concerns about the number of unarmed responders we are going to be deploying. And I have my concerns about what roles and responsibility will look like and workload. And there's a great deal of uncertainty that's on, that hasn't been addressed beyond stating that this is simply the first step and that we will build upon it. If we put all of our eggs on that and this first step does not follow through, there's a great deal of work that will be undone and we're back right where we started. And I'm very concerned about the prospect of us trying to pass something for the sake of passing it as opposed to passing something that's going to deliver to our communities because it's going to be very easy for us, in my estimate, to pass something, wipe our hands and be done with it. And I don't think that's how we should approach this. That's happened a whole lot in this country's history in trying to address social inequities. And I don't want ethical to go down that route. So in my estimate, I think we need more time than getting something ready by the time a referendum occurs would permit.
Thank you, thank you. You are reminding me that the work of the working group, and here Duxin and George can also comment. We had hoped to have the work of the working group completed sooner than March, when that was put in front of council. But we had concerns about not wanting to rush, wanting to make sure that we were considering all all the implications of that work. And Rob Gerhart was also on one of the subcommittees. So we wanted to take our time in order to be deliberative and get the recommendations right. So there are people who are not pleased with the amount of time that it took. There are certainly people who do not agree with all of the recommendations or feel that it does not go far enough. And there are some members of the public who believe it goes too far. So trying to weigh all of those considerations. I do share your concern about wanting a first step to be a very positive, productive step and not setting up something that will not be sustainable. And I lost track of whose hand went up first next. But I also want to ask if anyone else who was on the working group would like to make a comment about that timing element? George?
Thank you, Laura. Jorge makes makes sense. I would argue, and I don't know if my colleagues who are on the task force would agree, at the end of the time, when we were dealing with call types, I thought that process was rushed. I think we were making decisions about things we didn't have full legal knowledge of. People who mow lawns don't necessarily, aren't the best people to decide who gets called to what type of call. So that, we ran out of time to really study things. And one of the things I regret most about the working, the task force is we worked in subcommittees, which were very good. I think everything that came out of the subcommittees was really solid. But we didn't communicate as a group as much. Like, there were many people on the task force who I never spoke with and whose opinions I would really have liked to understand. So that, that was an unfortunate thing. And I agree that this is, this is going to be a big deal and and we really need to get it as close to right as we possibly can. And that may not be in time for a referendum this year. And part of getting this right, in my opinion, is seeing how it fits with a city manager. If the public chooses to go with the city manager. So you could argue that it would be good to find that out first. And you could also argue that two referendums in one year could be problematic.
Thank you, George. Robert and then Phoebe?
Thanks, Laura. A question for Ari first. In the spirit of kind of Jorge's comments and respecting the valued work of the community members who were engaged in this process, can you clarify? Right, so I know the report is like a large document, obviously. Are there elements of this proposal that can move forward as resolutions or ordinances without the referendum constraints, you know, such as like unarmed responders or resolutions committing us to budgetary, you know, support for trainings and data collection and things of that nature? I have a comment as well, but that's an informational question.
Yeah, the short answer is yes, definitely. And yeah, and New York State law governs, requires referenda for specific subject matters. And for many others does not. And the report obviously contains a variety of different recommendations. So yeah, a bunch of those are definitely implementable without going to referendum. And the question that council in turn needs to ask itself when evaluating how to proceed is which parts do you need to figure out together in order for them to make sense? And which parts can you do independently of each other? Where one part might have needed a referendum and the other not. But the answer to your question is yes, absolutely, council can take a bunch of those actions without a referendum.
Thank you. Yeah, and so to follow on that, right, like I hear and respect colleagues saying that, you know, this should be deliberative and when we should be really, you know, intentional about how we do things. I actually am heartened to hear, as Mayor Lewis said at the beginning of this part of the conversation, that like a deputy city manager doesn't require any kind of referendum. And I could, I would be, I'm more assured by that if there is a decision by this body to not pursue a referendum for this calendar year, that there would at least be some potential coordinating component out of the city manager or the mayor's office that could still exercise that authority, that, you know, the civilian component that we've been discussing. I'd also like to repeat something I suggested via email, which I think also ties nicely to Jorge's point and Laura's point about this being a first step. You know, I know under the Peterson administration, I believe, was the last time we had a public safety standing committee. And to George's point and Phoebe's earlier point about community engagement and transparency, you know, I would just like to say for the record that I would like to see council or the mayor's office consider reestablishing this body so that after we get through all of this voting, there is still a body, a dedicated body of members of council and future councils that can continue to do research, continue to make improvements and kind of stay laser focused on this. I mean, I know ostensibly right now this falls under the purview of city administration. But I think that given the breadth of community response, policing, fire and other things that would fall under the purview of public safety, you know, I wonder if colleagues think there is some value in having this revived?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for sending that in an email, Robert. It was helpful to get that in advance. Thanks. Phoebe, I saw your hand up?
Okay, I'm running out of, let me get back to this charger. Yes. I, you know, before, because I'm another one who feels like it could have went deeper. It could have went farther. There could have been more history about policing that, when we talk about transparency, transparent history of policing, right? And I wanted, this part would have helped us to understand why we got this executive order. Because this wasn't just George Floyd, right? This was a host. And this was things that happened in communities that look like mine's that have been power and think. But I also must say, I've been real involved with the PAL and saw some wonderful things happen. However, after speaking with Karen Yearwood and others, I began to think about it, how as a black woman, I've been hearing about wait for a long time, right? And wait broke the wagon. Also, however, this is not a process where we stop, where it's not working, let's squash this. This is a process where we continue. We continue to build and change and make better for community and for policing, right? So when I hear this piece about, let's wait another year or have you, whatever, I think about what wait did to the wagon. And I also think about how long I've been told as a black woman to wait. How long black and brown communities has been told to wait, right? And I'm not saying there's some things that could be done better in this reimagining. But you know what I said to myself? What the same thing I said about becoming a part of common council is that if I'm not a part of the problem, I'm part of the solution. So I'm going to make sure that my voice is that I get on a committee, that I get involved and that I really help to educate the community about what we mean when we say reimagining police. Because there's some things that I didn't see happen. I thought we were going to lose maybe 10 police officers and their monies was going to go to community organizations. That didn't happen. So yes, my thing is for us to really think deeply about what we say when we say wait.
Thank you, Phoebe, thank you. Your point about the history of policing. Your point about the history of policing. Does remind me that, and I believe we had this linked. I'll have to check if it is linked on either the reimagined public safety or the city website, but. The former city historian. Conducted an incredibly detailed. Research on the history of policing. And when she presented to the working group, I believe it was. It initially focused on the history of policing in Ithaca. She since expanded that to include. A more broad history of policing. So that's a good reminder. To find out where that history of policing piece resides. Thank you. Jorge?
Yeah, I just want to echo agreement with everything that's been said by by Phoebe. And and some of earlier points made by Robert. And I think that the the solution for where we go from here in terms of, I don't think the answer is, I don't think our choices are binary. I don't think it's. Wait, um, wait for another shot, wait for the referendum to pass and then try and do something. Or or try and pass something to say that we did it and and and, you know, applaud ourselves for that. I think we need to chew bubble gum and walk at the same time. And I think to the points that have been revealed to us by Ari. That there are certain things that we can pass right now, things that I think are wonderful and have come from the blood, sweat, tears and labor. Of our working group, we need to pass those things right now. And 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 we need to start working on that. And we also, from a lot of the comments that we've gotten, I mean, I don't think. There are the voices on council are exclusively the ones who've been saying that they wanted things to go farther. In terms of what they wanted to see from 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 this reimagining process. And so I think we need to have a deeper conversation and I'd like to return. To, I think, a public safety committee, as suggested. Earlier is a fascinating and a very smart idea to make sure that we are continuing this conversation and that we don't lose momentum after passing. A couple of pieces of legislation. And and so I think we should definitely be keeping that conversation going. Because, you know, justice doesn't end and because there have been a great deal of people who've expressed that. That we could be going more. And I know that there's this in. Enticing and enthralling idea of politics that like we have to make all sides happy. And that we need to to find the compromise that works in between. We're talking about communities. That have been historically marginalized and oppressed by a systemic racist history and that. We're still feeling those reverations today. And so there's no middle ground. Between that in my estimate. And so that means when we have the opportunity to go further, we should be going further. And so that's why I think we need to pass what we can now and use the momentum we get from those victories to build on that and continue to deliver for public safety.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Rob Gerhardt.
Thanks, Laura. So yeah, I have to agree. I do think with a lot of what we've talked about tonight. We need to keep moving forward. So foot on the accelerator. But I I think the the scope of the work that we need to do has been. Put into such a short window that I am also concerned that we're not going to be able to do this well. But there's two things I want to make a point about in this regard. The first is, you know, picking up on Jorge and Phoebe's points and others as well. When we do this, we need to make sure we we demonstrate a commitment to this community. That we are moving forward, right? None of this, okay, we're going to put the brakes on and hold for a little while. That that we owe that to this community and to especially all the the people that have been waiting for this to happen. In some form or another. But the second thing I want to make a point about is a logistical one, which is. Before we get too wed to this idea of a deputy. City manager like position. I want to make sure everyone understands that when a referendum gets passed. If it gets passed to establish the city manager, we won't have a city manager until January 1 of 2024. So we want to make sure that if there are things we're doing in the meantime that might require a role like that. That we need to have the ability to do those things, even if that particular position doesn't exist yet. Right? So I want to make sure we work through those details as well. So thanks.
Thanks, Rob. That's a very good point and very good reminder that if the referendum on city manager, which. I understand will be on the ballot is on the ballot for November. If that passes, then that will begin the process of clarifying that position description and searching for that individual. And that individual likely not being in place until January 2024. And that's a good reminder that you have given that Jorge has given that Phoebe has given that others have given. That we have to have forward momentum. As there is movement in in some other areas and it's not yet. Decided, I believe, that we would move in the direction of a deputy. City manager of public safety. I think that's a conversation. It's one idea that has been lofted. It is a conversation that we should continue. I don't want to state it as. You know, a decision of council, but your point on the timing is very well taken. Thanks. I'm just going to go across my screen because I was looking down. I didn't see when hands went up. Robert, Duxson, then George, unless anyone disagrees with that order.
I think it's actually the reverse order of the hands.
Oh, okay. So George first, then Duxson, then Robert. People move around on my screen.
I I just feel like I need to respond to one thing Phoebe said. This reimagining process. Never included. Firing 10 police officers. That has never been part of what we were doing and reimagining. And I'd just like to say, can I finish? In this town. The people who suffer most from. Crime are often in the poorest neighborhoods. There's a lot more crime in West Village than there is in Bell Sherman. So. My constituents, who happen to be black and brown. Often ask for for more public safety. So I'll just say that.
And I'll have to respond. What that said, that's what I wanted. I didn't say that was in the reimagining plan. I said, that's what I wanted. And let's, and another thing before I let you talk, another thing is. Why we don't know about the. The crime in Bell Sherman is because there's not reported the way it is reported about West Village.
Well, let me jump in here and I I would ask that we all are respectful and let one another finish what we're saying. And that people raise hands then if they want to respond to anything. So. Thank you, Phoebe. Thank you, George. Duxson and then Robert and then Jorge. And then Phoebe.
Thank you. First, I want to respond to something George said much earlier and I should have jumped in, but I. And felt this too, but George, you should give yourself more credit with regard to, you know, your role, our role in making calls delineation determinations and. I can understand that it may have. They have felt too fast, but it actually took months of work and part of the point there was to center the community. In making those delineations and we may not have gotten it right because a lot of it was. That did require some education to understand why, you know, an armed response was necessary or at least perceived to be necessary in one situation or another, but. I thought it was in fact important to kind of get a layperson's view of. Of what they expect when they think of a particular. So that's my way of saying, give yourself more credit because I think your input was super valuable and the community at large. And then with regard to the more specific point about referendum or not. I I think I can be convinced that. Not doing it via charter change is fine. I think my interest in it was. A few things. One is to have a concrete way to move forward. Two, to get community buy-in. So to get. Voter, direct voter input into whether they think that a new structure is what they want to see a civilian head of a public safety department. And I feel like it is one of the first questions that we need to ask of ourselves. I think the other one is. Do we have unarmed? Emergency responders. I get the sense that most of us agree that we should. So maybe that has already been answered and now we're kind of working through the other details, but. Whatever form it takes, I agree with those who have said that. In addition to some of the more less, you know, less controversial. Steps forward like changing our data gathering practices. It's important that we signal our commitment to. A to make decisions and then to signal our commitment to those decisions in some way, if even if it doesn't end up being. Legislation that goes to referendum. I'm not sure what that looks like because it's, you know, we're all for reelection in 2023 and things can change. And so it's it's hard to. Force a future council to implement our plans, but again, one reason why I'm interested in a referendum and a charter change. But nonetheless, we are creative and trying to find ways like the cop plan, for example, is a document that. That the city abides by. Granted, that's prescriptive by state law, but we could use only very similar to kind of. Set our path forward and have a plan that we can follow. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Duxson, and thank you for your earlier email at which you. Suggested that one of the things council. Can look at this year, something concrete is as we enter into budget discussions. Late summer, early fall, we can look at the possibility of introducing. I think you were suggesting the possibility of two unarmed. Crisis response, community solutions.
I was very, I definitely want five, at least five. I was mentioning that Denver, a much larger city, got away with two. And so, you know, we might not need to get hung up right away on that number.
Yeah, and that's an area where we might have to consider. Starting small and building upon. I mean, that was the point with starting with five, starting small and building upon. Okay, thank you. Robert and then Jorge, or was that in reverse?
I think that's right.
Okay.
Thank you. So two, two things. One, just a quick, Rob, point very well taken about the time delay on city manager. I would just, and 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 excellent point about, you know, that Laura raised about, you know, the logistical and administrative. You know, hurdles and the fact that we're not, that is just an additional idea. That's not, of course. Policy. I would just say that if council, I imagine. I imagine if there is no great hurdle to create a deputy city manager in that case, that upon seeing. Referendum pass, we could. Take it upon ourselves to create like a deputy chief of staff to fulfill that function in the interim. That it would not necessarily be something that we just have to wait until implemented. But that's just my own minor comment on that. I would just like to say, I appreciate the discussion and the thoughts shared by all here. I would like to see, and my own view is I would like to see some. Draft resolutions about the things that it sounds like we're all, you know, comfortable moving forward with. You know, put through the proper committees and begin to be drafted and voted on. You know, to the point of like really demonstrating our commitment to this process and acknowledging that it may take a while to fully implement, but like. I think we've had a very healthy debate over the. Recommendations in the report and I think that. It is time for us to shoulder our responsibility as legislators to begin to translate some of that into. Whether it's resolutions or ordinances. To to. To begin to actually set the 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 markers for implementation. And I would, I would just, if I could pointedly pose that question to 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 all colleagues, you know, are folks? Ready to start debating? Legislation on on any pieces of this because because I certainly am.
There would be some, some concerns on. There are some things that we can. Craft a resolution. I mean, one of the easiest things where I heard uniform agreement was, for example, the. Release of funds for the admin. Assistant that we would partner with the county on that budgetary concern, but. Ari, if I could turn to you for some input on. Where we would have authority to draft legislation at this point. What are the challenges? What are the options?
Yeah, I I think. In terms of legal scope, there's there's quite a bit. It's again, it's just those areas which are reasonably narrow that trigger a referendum. That face different impediments. So. I I think, I think I'm, we would need, I would need some guidance from council on which areas council wants to pursue. But but I think the answer is that a goodly variety of them are available for action. If that's where council, it feels ready to go. And again, the other element to consider is which pieces do you feel like need to be taken in concert, you know, with which. Which pieces have to be put together as a single puzzle when you put them together and which ones can be done independently of others without worrying about how the puzzle pieces fit together.
And I'm sorry, I missed the chat that I just looked at now and that had to do with the timing. Of a city manager and can that be accelerated and likely that's not the case. For a variety of reasons, but I think that is not possible to accelerate someone actually being. Brought on board sworn in as a city manager before. Yeah, one, one point is that it would cut short the existing mayor's term. And. We can't start a hiring process until we know that the referendum has been approved. So I hope that answers the question. I think Cynthia, you posed about acceleration and it's a question that's come up before too, but there are. A number of stacked blocks that are at play right now. That would make that not possible. Jorge or George, who had hand up first?
I'm last, I'm last.
Yeah.
And then Cynthia, if you had another point and then George.
Yeah, so I think if our path forward. Consists of two pieces, the idea that we're going to move forward on specific pieces of legislation. And either table or develop a more long-term plan to address some of the pieces that we want, that we like and we want to pursue. This is our course of action, as I believe it ought to be, because I affirm that we need to be. Chewing gum and walking at the same time and how we deal with a reimagining public safety. I am absolutely in agreement that we need to be moving forward on coming up with some specifics of coming up with a list of legislation that we want to begin drafting on pieces that we agree with. But I think we need to find some form of tangible commitment that council can convey that will suggest that. We are going to treat this as a holistic, long-term approach and that the things that we do not pass do not get left to a shelf for a future council to return to. Decades in the future because the nature of our work is very volatile and it's very subject to change. And I can see very likely that something happens the next couple of months after we. Pass some legislation that implements portions of our reimagining public safety and doesn't do the rest. And after we've all celebrated ourselves for doing a tremendous job. The rest, something comes up and we can and we have to turn our attention away. And so I think the. The resurrection of a standing public safety committee. That will engage, for instance, members who participated in the working group to see how we can better flesh out. And address some of these policies that we couldn't turn into legislation right away. I think we need a hard, very solid commitment of of that variety and and taking that shape before we can commit to taking this two-pronged approach of doing some now and working on a longer-term plan for the others. So I think we need to come up with that list of policies we want to pass now, but find a tangible, very specific approach and strategy for how we're going to deal with long-term specifics. And I think we need to do so simultaneously.
Thank you. Thank you. And yeah, a few people have mentioned a desire to convene another committee that would look at, I think Robert has talked about it, Jorge, you're just talking about it, but a public safety standing committee. We have two standing committees at the moment, as we all know, both of which have fairly packed agendas on a regular basis. So we can open up that discussion of an ad hoc committee. I don't think we can introduce another standing committee at the moment. We can certainly have the discussion around setting up an ad hoc committee that would be focused on on public safety. And that, that, by the way, was really one of my thoughts in one of our discussions, either at CA or in our last committee of the whole, is to have a group of council members who could come together to look at, I think, as Jorge said, you know, a list of policies, concrete actions that we can take going forward.
If I, if I could just interject briefly, I apologize, Mayor Lewis. I do want to specify that I think that while I think it makes, it's very logical and it makes sense that we should be having this ad hoc committee of public safety be comprised of members of council. I do believe we need to find a way to incorporate a process through which members of the community could get be all, can get involved beyond simply showing up for public comment or doing something of that variety to keep in line with a lot of the spirit of what, something that Phoebe has been talking about in terms of engaging the community and not having this sort of be something where, for a couple of months to a year, we were discussing reimagining public safety with the community, and we took it very seriously. But after we got a couple of pieces of legislation, we took it on our own to pass something based off of it and then left it at that. And I know that's not what you're suggesting at all, but I just think it's, to be very clear, I think we need to find a way to incorporate a committee that consists of council members and community members, especially those who have been marginalized by injustices and how we've done public safety in the past, so that we can come up with a cohesive, long-term plan that isn't, you know, that doesn't have council doing what it thinks it's in the best interest of the community, but has the community working with council on a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And what you are also reminding me is that any ad hoc committee of council that is, that we decide on going forward, it would be my hope, my expectation that that group would have interaction with, for example, the Community Justice Center that most definitely has community members and has a broad cross-section of representatives of membership on it. But I I take your point about an ad hoc committee that would have voices of community members. So, thank you, thank you for that. I think Cynthia and then George.
Yep.
Thank you, George. I I support the creation of of a new committee. How we structure it, I think, is going to be important. I do think their work needs to be public, available to be observed. I do think that it it must contain a broad section of the community. It should also receive the input of victims, you know, victims advocacy groups, assigned counsel, district attorney, all the advisory members that were listed on the report that maybe did not have as big a role as I think they should have. I do support this effort, but I think this needs to be done in a public fashion, in a participatory fashion, and then to have recommendations that the public can provide feedback on. But I do support the direction that is being proposed.
Thank you. Cynthia, that's, that's a good point. And it does remind me that there was opportunity on the reimagining public safety website for community input. I don't know that we received as much input as was hoped for. More input is is always better, more, hearing more voices on what is being considered, I think, is is helpful. So I I take your point. And if we did have an ad hoc committee, as we have others, it would be a public process. It would meet the standard for complying with open meetings law.
That's important, thank you. George?
Thank you, Laura. My comment is, is kind of related to what I've heard from my colleagues about, we need to get something going here and and show our commitment. I'd like to remind us all that the position of chief of police is open. And I don't see any reason why we can't seek somebody for that position who has all the qualities that we're saying we want in a commissioner. Someone who has a history of working to change policing in the communities they've come from. Someone who is either black and brown or brown themselves, or has a proven relationship with minority communities and has a background in alternative forms of policing. We can seek that kind of person as a chief of police, and we can do that now. So I think we should be thinking about that as well.
Thank you, George, thank you. I will just respectfully make one comment, and that is, there was a good deal of consensus around there being civilian oversight. I I I agree with you that it would be good to find a police chief who has all the qualities you identify. I think simultaneously, it would be good to have, whether it is a commissioner, deputy city manager in charge of public safety, someone who is a civilian with with that oversight.
Is is it impossible to have a civilian as chief of police?
I think it is.
That's right. Yeah, New York state law requires the chief to be a qualified New York officer.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that has come up before, but good question, thank you.
But we want a chief, we want a chief of police who's all those things.
Yes, I agree, I agree, yes.
And we can get started now.
And I will say that is, that is moving forward.
Thanks, Laura.
That description and that that search. Let me turn to Cynthia, and then let me ask if we have agreed to a number of things, and if we are ready to move on at this point. I will remind my colleagues, we do have executive session this evening. I don't, certainly don't want to cut short any of this discussion. There is one other agenda item that I want to make reference to before we move to executive session. So let me turn to Cynthia and then maybe move on in our agenda.
Thank you, I agree 100% with George. I think we can include in the job description for chief of police the qualities that we are seeking. And we should revise those, that description as quickly as possible and fill that position. I would look to Ari for the legislation that does require the chief of police to actually be a police officer. I, that's not in the research that I have found. I know the sheriffs are not required to be police officers. Police commissioners are not required by law to be police officers. And and based on my research, I didn't find that to be the case for chiefs of police either. So I would like to see that reference if possible. But I don't, I agree with George. I think we should find a permanent chief of police and revise that job description to include the qualities we are seeking.
Thank you. And and I don't think this is a charter issue, I think it's a New York state law issue. But I'll turn to, I'll turn to the lawyer for that confirmation, Ari, is that?
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely a New York state law issue, that's absolutely right. Can, we can pull up the authority for that, but that that is the case.
Thank you, yeah, I'd love to see that, thank you. Okay. Can we move forward then? Okay. You'll see on our agenda that we have a discussion of process issues in the reimagining public safety. And as indicated, a good bit of that discussion will be taking place in executive session. But Ari, again, if you don't mind me turning to you for comment on the process agenda item.
Yeah, sure. So in in terms of the, and I think you're referring to the the process, looking back at at events that have been a real concern on council. The, I think this succinct update there is, as council and the public are aware, the mayor has called for an investigation into the potential outside financial influence on the process. And the city is in the process of standing up an investigation along the lines called for by the mayor. Additionally, as I think everyone is aware, at least on council and and some members of the public as well, the Tompkins County Board of Ethics has received a complaint regarding the process issues that were discussed in depth at the city administration committee last month. And the county attorney, the county attorney, not the city attorney, the county attorney, has issued a public opinion to the effect that the county board of ethics does have advisory jurisdiction to process the complaint that they received and to investigate the complaint that they received regarding potential city ethics violations. And I have evaluated the county attorney's analysis asserting the county board of ethics advisory jurisdiction. And I conclude that he is correct, that because the city does not have its own board of ethics under New York state law, a county that does have a board of ethics in the form that that Tompkins County does ends up with advisory jurisdiction to review complaints brought regarding other municipal governments, like the city's government in, that that are within that county. And and that is this circumstance. So I believe that the county attorney's analysis is correct, that the county board of ethics does have advisory jurisdiction to review the complaint that has been filed with the county board of ethics. And I certainly would anticipate all city stakeholders cooperating in both investigations.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ari. Any discussion or questions that are related to personnel matters? Clearly, we will need to move into executive discussion, executive session, I'm sorry to have that discussion. Is there a motion to move to executive session? I see.
Right, can I ask a clarifying question from Ari?
Sure.
Ari, could you, I know it was right at the beginning of your statement, and I may not have heard it clearly. Could you describe what investigation the city is currently conducting?
Yeah, I think that likely is best discussed in executive session in in more detail, given the implications as a personnel matter. What I said at the beginning of my statement is that the city is in the process of standing up an investigation along the lines that the mayor has called for. And and I think that's the extent of it, that it's appropriate to address on the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So we have a motion to move to executive session, Patrick seconds, all those in favor?
And this is a, I guess, a motion to move into executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Thank you. Okay, that looks, anyone opposed? Phoebe, did I get your vote? I'm going to say that's nine zero vote in favor of moving to executive session. So I do not anticipate any likelihood that we will return to open session. There are not likely to be any votes resulting from our executive session. So we will, I believe, be able to adjourn. We don't need a link, because we will be able to remain on the current link. Thankfully, I'm happy not to be going back and forth, although this computer seems to be working far better than my clunky laptop. Okay, so the vote passes nine zero to move to executive session. Thank you. So Julie, if you would.